I'd like to call the Monday, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting in order. Everybody could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome everybody this evening and those watching at home. If we could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Crowe.
Present.
Commissioner Banks.
Present.
Commissioner Peel.
Present.
Commissioner Veal.
Present.
Commissioner Rohr.
Present.
Commissioner Billups.
Present.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Present.
Commissioner Graham.
Present.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Present.
Chairperson Sanderson.
Present.
Alright. Thank you, everybody, and tonight's agenda consists of item one A, the meeting minutes from March fourteenth Planning Commission meeting. Items two and three is a rezoning and conditional use permit for Universal Auto. Items four UDC text amendments for boards and commissions, and item five is other business. At this time, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda for the approval of the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Banks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. Now move on to the next item of the agenda, and I'll open the public hearing for agenda item two and three, rezoning RZ. Oh, oh, two, 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 eight, one, five, seven, and conditional use permit CUP zero, two, 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 eight, one, five, six for Universal Auto. And ask for the exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record on RZ dash oh, two, dash, two, two, dash, eight, one, five, seven. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments, two applicant plans with attachments, three affidavit of publication in the examiner on March twelfth, twenty twenty-two, four one hundred eighty-five foot notification map, five names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site, six copy of the letter sent to said property owners, seven Title Four land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and a two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference. And on CUP dash zero, two, dash, two, two, dash, eight, one, five, six, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments, two applicant plans with attachments, three affidavit of publication in the examiner on March twelfth, twenty twenty-two, four one hundred eighty-five foot notification map, five names and addresses of property owners within one hundred eighty-five feet of the site, six copy of the letter sent to said property owners, seven Title Four land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and eight two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference.
Alright, thank you. At this time, I'd ask for the staff's presentation. Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. Before you this evening is the request for rezoning of the southeast section of sixteen hundred Northwest South Outer Road property from GB General Business to RC Regional Commercial and approval of conditional use permit to expand and redevelop the parking lot for the Universal Auto Plaza at fifteen hundred Northwest South Outer Road. The first request is for a rezoning of the southeast section of sixteen hundred Northwest South Outer Road to RC Regional Commercial District. Rezoning this section is the first step in allowing the property to expand the parking lot, and this will complement the adjacent regional commercial to the east. The second request is for a conditional use permit under the outdoor sales and service equipment. Review criteria for those standards to accommodate the expansion and redevelopment for the parking lot. Based on the review criteria, the CUP meets all the review criteria except for an existing legal nonconforming minimum of twenty-five feet from the street right away. The paving plan brings the site closer to compliance that current exists with a setback of eighteen point eighty-four feet. Staff reviewed the rezoning request under the review criterion finds that the rezoning request meets the other goals within the two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan. Staff reviewed the request for the good conditional use permit under outdoor sales and service equipment view for those standards to accommodate the expansion and redevelopment of the parking lot. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning and approval of the conditional use permit with conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff by the Commissioners? Seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation or answer any questions? I need to have you state your name and address for the record, please, and be sworn in.
Yeah, it's Matt Slisch, Engineering Solutions, fifty southeast thirtieth Street, Lee's Home, Missouri. Thirtieth, fifty southeast thirtieth. Engineering Solutions. I do. So I think Jamarcus has done a good job. The owner of Universal Auto is here as well. If you have any questions, essentially it's that existing auto facility that's been there for a number of years. He's owned it and continued to do well in that corner. He's worked out a deal with the Pediatrics Facility to the west that had some vacant ground that kind of was isolated back behind their facility and kind of back behind his facility, so it seemed to make sense that we would combine the two lots. And so that's kind of how this started. We did a minor plat discussion with staff that then led into the rezoning that led into the CUP. So we're kind of here starting first steps of the process to hopefully expand the facility and continue to provide a great service to the community. So again, I'm here or the owner of the car lot is here as well.
Any questions for the applicant by the Commissioners? Seeing none, thank you. Alright, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Would you have one speaker for him? If you could be sworn in and state your name and address, please, for the record.
Okay, sure. My name is Mark Delauter. I'm the business owner on the south section at fifteen hundred Northwest Mock Avenue, SPD Housing Solutions. D E L A U T O U R. I do. First of all, thank you for hearing us this evening and thank you for the notification. For clarity, I'm not necessarily opposed or an objection to the proposed solution. I'm all pro-business, so congrats on the success of the business, and I wish you all the success in the future. My concern as the adjoining property owner in that location is twofold. The first would be drainage, and just wanted to hear from Matt, the engineer. There is a drainage culvert that runs in between the two properties and just wanted to hear what their plans were with regard to the additional drainage that concerns that I would have with cement running. I just don't want to be suddenly swamped by a new development. But more importantly, our property that is directly south, and just so we're clear, yeah, with the, yeah, so directly on the south, so we are fifteen oh one Northwest Mock Avenue, which is on directly southeast of where Mock Avenue comes off of fifty, yep, right there. So that's our building there. We have a large parking lot of approximately twenty-two spots. But the frustration for me as a business owner is that we have constantly been getting random cars parked there. And I think it's obviously because they've been overrun with business, which is great for them. But we have had a negative impact on our business with their cars constantly getting parked in our parking lot. Again, I didn't have the owner's number, so we've tried to talk to managers and that didn't go very well. We've had to go to the extent of actually placing, after numerous calls to the city, placing a sign on our front driveway that says any cars will be towed in accordance with the law. This has happened on ten-plus occasions that we're aware of. Again, we're a Monday-through-Friday business. Clearly, these guys are working on the weekends. My concern is that with it being a Saturday-Sunday business, they're obviously encroaching, getting closer to, again, I said I don't want to say encroaching, it is their land. They are moving closer to our business address right now. And my concern is that the line that's already blurred, because people are parking in our parking lot, would get further blurred by the parking lot now coming within, Matt, you'd be able to tell me specifically, but much closer to our property line. So again, my, I'm not here to just raise a fuss. My solution or potential request of the board would be that I would give a conditional, that we give conditional approval subject to a privacy fence of six-foot privacy fence of sorts, just being built by the, you know, the people, the Universal Auto people that would give clear delineation and separation so that we would not be impacted in our day-to-day business. I'm happy to hear and take any, any thoughts.
Yeah. Any questions for this witness by the Commissioners? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Would the applicant like to come forward and state anything else?
Sure.
So we'll need you to be sworn in as well. I'm sure your name and address, please.
Scott Duncan, sixty-two oh three Brassie Lane, Parkville, six, four, one, five, two. B R A S S I D. I do. First, I'd like to apologize about the parking situation, and honestly, I have never heard of that.
Mr. Duncan, if you can just address the.
Oh, I apologize. Well, I just wanted to apologize to him.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, first off, because I, I mean, it's never been brought to my attention. I had absolutely no idea that any of our customers or employees had parked in your lot. But that's one of the things we're trying to address, is have a bigger parking lot. We don't have situations with parking. And I don't think that there's any issue with providing a privacy fence, but I, yeah, I mean, I'm completely shocked, actually, that this is even brought up as an issue, because I'm completely unaware of it. I'm shocked. But we're happy to provide a, you know, a privacy fence, so if that's what is required.
Any, any questions for the, from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Banks.
It was also a concern on the drainage, so if we could address that.
And Matt can help.
Thank you.
Scott doesn't want that one. But yeah, and the stormwater drainage, we'll have, all impervious surface will be taken care of with stormwater runoff and controls, so detention basins and directed properly. So he will see no change or inundation of any sort from the additional pavement runoff. The existing system will actually see an improvement just for the exist, or the additional controls that we put on site, so I don't have the exact design to tell you exactly where it'll be, because we're still on that conceptual side. But it certainly, by your guys' codes and requirements, won't be allowed to go towards his property to do anything to his site that would cause any concern or problems.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions by, for the applicant by the Commissioners? Is there any other further discussion by the Commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Peel.
I have two things here. I'd like to request that the rezon, I'm assuming that this is going to be one vote that will cover both situations, rezoning and the CUP.
No, there'll be two votes, one rezoning, one for the CUP.
Alright, and I have additional questions for staff that I thought of that I'd like to ask.
Okay.
Yeah. Jamarcus, are you aware that the current UDC says that bay doors cannot face a public right-of-way? Is that still current UDC?
Believe in the current UDC, that is discouraged. However, they are not proposing to be making any changes to the building. This is strictly a parking lot expansion, so there's no requirement that the bay doors or the building architecture needs to be addressed.
Okay, also, the minimum setback, are, will they be in compliance with the twenty-five foot? Or has the UDC been changed to, to that, that setbacks, to eighteen foot?
They don't, but they are getting closer to compliance with that.
Okay, thank you, staff. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions or comments from Commissioners at this time? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on the rezoning.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Peel.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning RZ zero, two, 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 eight, one, five, seven for Universal Auto.
Alright, thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Veal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second for Commissioner Honeycutt. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Veal.
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Aye.
Commissioner Crowe.
Aye.
Chairperson Sanderson.
Aye. Alright, so that motion carried. That item was recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday, April fourth meeting at six PM. And now entertain a motion for the conditional use permit.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Veal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit CUP zero, two, 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 eight, one, five, six for Universal Auto with the conditions.
I have a motion from Commissioner Veal with the two conditions. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, and this will also be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Peel.
Name, reason being the UDC requirement of twenty-five foot.
Commissioner Veal.
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokkenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Aye.
Commissioner Crowe.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
I'm hesitant to vote aye, because I wish we could have put in the privacy fence as a condition, so therefore I'll vote no.
Chairperson Sanderson.
Aye. Alright, so this, that motion carried with the two staff conditions. The item will also be recommended and heard at this, by the City Council at their Monday, April fourth meeting at six PM. Alright, now moving to the next item of the agenda. Open the public hearing for agenda item four, UDC text amendment, UDCT zero, three, two, two, eight, one, seven, five for boards and commissions, and I'd ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments, two applicant plans with attachments, three affidavit of publication in the examiner on March twelfth, twenty twenty-two, four Title Four land use section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference, and five two thousand fourteen comprehensive plan by reference.
Alright, thank you. At this time, I hear the staff's presentation. Mr. Wright.
Alright, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Before you this evening are UDC text amendments to amend and adopt regulations related to review and decision-making bodies and associated processes and procedures. Since December twenty twenty-one, a board and commission task force consisting of staff liaisons and three council members have been working together on the review of current codes, processes, and procedures with the goal of creating consistency and clarity across all boards and commissions. Chapter four oh two in the UDC covers six boards and commissions, which requires UDC to be amended to accommodate these updates as proposed by the task force. And this is the first set of code amendments, which standardizes the processes and procedures. A second set of code amendments is anticipated later in the spring to address other items, which include implementing neighborhood meeting requirements for certain planning applications, as well as amendments to the Downtown Review Board and Historic Preservation Commission to address overlapping and conflicting processes and procedures. Before I walk through the bullet point of changes, I will note that the language that is in the staff report is not the final format or language that will be presented to the City Council for final consideration. Some language has been further modified since the publishing of the staff report, though the intent of the, the intent of those changes remain the same. Summary formatting and updates to section letters and numbers are also currently being finalized in advance of the City Council presentation and the final ordinance. So I'll go through each board and commission and take questions at the end of the presentation. So the first board and commission is the Planning Commission, and I'll just go through the major changes to each one of the boards and commissions. So quite a few of the modifications are the same throughout. The first one for the Planning Commission is to assist with the appointments and quorums. There are proposals to reduce the number of members for multiple boards and commissions. The Planning Commission is proposed to be reduced from eleven members to nine members. Staff does believe that now is the ideal time to make this reduction, as there is currently an unfilled vacancy, and one Commissioner has submitted a formal request not to be reappointed. The remainder of the items that are changing within the Planning Commission section of the UDC text amendments include the schedule and process of appointments, the process for removal of members, removing the power to make separate rules and guidelines and refer to rules of procedure that apply to all boards and commissions, as well as adding requirements for the establishment of subcommittees, the schedule for election of chair and vice chair, and that an annual report be provided to the City Council, which would be the same annual report that we typically give to the Planning Commission annually. The next board is the Board of Adjustment. No change in membership is proposed, as that is said by state statute. However, Planning Commission liaisons are no longer needed, as they are not required by state statute, and variances are not, are not reviewed by the Planning Commission. The remaining changes are similar to the Planning Commission, which include updating the language for the appointment schedule, process, and qualifications, the removal of members, referencing the rules of procedures, adding requirements for the establishment of subcommittees, and then adding the vice chair role and term limits for both the chair and vice chair. Currently, there is no reference to a vice chair in the Board of Adjustment regulations, so we are proposing to add that, as that is a needed position. The next committee is the Appearance Review Committee. There are no changes proposed to the membership, as there are currently three and propose to remain at three committee members for this committee. The remaining changes are, again, the same language to standardize items or clarify or remove unnecessary language. That includes the appointment schedule and process, the process for removal of members, updating the term limit from two years to three years, which coincides with most of the other boards and commissions, updating the language for the appointment of chairs and vice chairs, clarify that the committee reviews site plan and design reviews, applications and not building permits, and that is based on past precedent and intent. Currently, the code just says building permits, but that is not how that committee has functioned in the past. The Appearance Review Committee reviews site plan and design review applications when they're within the Adams area Parkway overlays, overlay zoning district. And then also removing some unnecessary language related to record-keeping, as that is covered elsewhere by the code or within the rules and procedures. Next is the Historic Preservation Commission. Currently, there are nine members on the commission, including a council member and a planning commissioner. There is a, the proposal is to reduce that to seven members, with the council member and planning commissioner still serving, but as non-voting liaisons. And then updating the qualifications of the members of the commission to be consistent with the state Historic Preservation Offices' guidelines for being a certified local government, which would keep the city eligible for historic preservation-related grants and programs. And then the other changes are all items that have been addressed with some of the other code changes for the other boards and commissions. Probably the board that has the most significant number of changes is the Downtown Review Board. Currently, there are nine members on the Downtown Review Board, that, which includes two council members, two staff, which are the Community Development Director and the Public Works Director, as well as two Planning Commissioners and one alternate Planning Commissioner. We are proposing to reduce that to five members and remove the council members, staff, and planning commissioners. Three of the members must be residents, or all efforts will be made to choose residents who live, work, or own property in the downtown zoning district for three of the members. And then the other two members will be one representative each from Downtown Alive and the Chamber of Commerce. Same, same changes elsewhere for the rest of the Downtown Review Board. And then the last commission is the Downtown, or the Development Advisory Commission. There are no changes in membership proposed. All, all the changes are generally the same as applied to other boards and commissions. So there's nothing unique, other than just the standardized language that applies to all the boards and commissions. The Development Advisory Commission did meet on March sixteenth and reviewed the proposed UDC text amendments, and they recommended unanimous approval of the amendments without any added comments. Staff believes that the proposed text amendments meet all five review criteria for text amendments. These amendments will provide a more streamlined process for the conduct of meetings, which improves the review and decision-making process, thereby improving the development review process. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the text amendments, and I'm here for any questions.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Wright. Are there any questions from the Planning Commission?
Yes.
If you could scroll back to the Planning Commission, I noticed that most of the other committees, they kept their chair and vice chair, and we've gone to secretary for vice chair, and I just wondered why, because they don't take minutes or keep records or anything.
Yeah, so that is actually, so both Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment, we made all of our revisions in light of the state statute. Those are the two commissions that are, have authority from the state to give us the, that give you power through the state to do that. So that's why they use the term secretary. So there is a section in there where we put the members, there is somewhere where it states secretary, who shall act as the vice chair. So we were clarifying that the, the vice chair, the vice chair and the secretary are one and the same.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just wanted to make sure it was on record that you're still vice chair.
Any other, Mr. Crowe?
I have several questions. What kind of powers does this, would this give to the Historic Society or the Downtown Alive Commission Board? What would, what would they do differently if they were allowed to?
So currently, the Downtown Alive, are you referring to their relation to the Downtown Review Board?
Yes. What would, how would this amendment change their relationship to what we do?
It, it doesn't. Currently, the Downtown Review Board already consists of membership from both the Downtown Alive Board and the Chamber of Commerce.
It said there's amendment to their duties and powers.
Oh.
How would that?
Yeah, so that, that's a future amendment. Currently, there's a lot of overlap and some confusion over which board or commission has the final authority over certain types of applications and permits when it's, when they have overlapping jurisdiction. So most of the historic district is in the downtown zoning district, which the Downtown Review Board reviews, but there are also a lot of historic areas that are in the downtown zoning district. So the code is not clear. The code, when we adopted the Downtown Development Code, did not take into consideration how that impacted the Historic Preservation Commission. There's also certain types of permits where the Historic Preservation Commission recommends to staff rather than the Downtown Review Board, even though there's some overlapping. There's just some inconsistency in the codes that we need to work out and spell out what type of application goes to what board and commission, and who has the final say.
Are we voting on that today?
No, that language has not been drafted. That is, we anticipate coming within the next sixty to ninety days.
Okay. How does this, is the City Council making any changes there, what they do, or?
Yes, they, there will also be changes that apply to all boards and commissions. There's also rules of procedures that would apply universally to boards and commissions as well as council, primarily relate to the conduct of public hearings and the conduct of meetings.
Can we make recommendations for anything that you've talked about to add to, to this, or?
Yes, the Planning Commission is a recommending body to City Council on these text amendments, so if there is additional recommendations that you have as part of this, that, that can be made to council.
I noticed there's been, you, I believe you mentioned there were term limits mentioned for the Planning Commission. Change there in our term limits?
No, only for the chair and vice chair, the two-year terms, which is actually how it is set currently.
Has there, has there ever been any discussion for the City Council in terms of term limits?
No, and it's not a term limit on how many times you can be appointed. It's just a term limit on how many times you can be chair or vice chair consecutively. So the, the actual term limits, the Planning Commission is going to remain at four years.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions for staff by the Commissioners?
I, do you have a question?
Oh, yeah.
Do you have my memory? When was the last time that this was updated?
There's been some minor amendments done throughout the years. I believe the last one was twenty nineteen. There were some changes related to how boards and commissions and membership is, was appointed. Some of that has changed. There were some changes related to the mayor and council appointing most chairs and vice chairs in twenty nineteen. That is being altered as part of this as well, to give boards and commissions the power to elect their own chair and vice chair for most boards. But there's not been a complete overhaul like this.
Right.
At all.
That's what I was thinking. This is pretty significant, so if you did a couple of these, you ought to have it.
Yes, no, and this has been something that we've been working on for about. Yes, no, and this has been something that we've been working on for about four months.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. I would ask if there's any, anybody not, it's like speaking in favor. Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Any other further discussion by the Commissioners? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and I would ask for a motion on the UDC text amendment.
Chair.
Mr. Peel.
I make a motion for UDC text amendment, UDCT 0322-8175 for boards and commissions be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you. I have a motion from Commissioner Peel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Stokenberry. This will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Veal.
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt.
Aye.
Commissioner Crowdoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Chairperson Sanderson.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion carried. That item will be recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday, April 4 meeting at 6:00 PM. On to other business. Mr. Wright?
Our next meeting will be Monday, April 11. We do have agenda items for that meeting, so hope to see everybody then.
All right. Any other business from staff? Any other business by Commissioners?
I have something.
Yes, Mr. Stokenberry.
Just wanted to say thank you for your service, Lynn.
Oh, thank you.
Done very well.
My last meeting will be April the 11th.
I didn't know if it was.
I didn't either.
And that's a flower ceremony.
I know, I have, you have me one more time. Have to put up with me.
It's a sign that she just needs to.
Some more flowers.
Yeah, I'll miss you, but thank you.
You just won't have flowers, is that what that is?
That's what the flesh, she won't be here next time, so. And I thank you. I really have enjoyed serving with all of you, and don't make me cry now. I will miss you, and I'll be watching, though. And if you need to call a friend, you can call me. All right, thank you. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Send a motion for Commissioner Honeycutt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Banks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's meet and adjourn.